All right. So let's open up this meeting, Tuesday, March 5, 2019, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's a joint meeting with Finance Committee. The Finance Committee does not have a quorum, so when they do, they can call their meeting to order. Our first order of business is to discuss and vote on the reorganization of Board of Selectmen. I asked Rita to put this on here. You talked about it before, but I think going into budget season, my guess, or I should say, my assumption would be that Mitzi would be kind of leading the charge on tonight's meeting as well as tomorrow's meeting. I also think that based on what's upcoming with the agendas, I think it would be good for her to kind of get involved sooner than later because of the budget stuff. So with that said, our first order of business is to have that conversation and vote for the board.
Right, which I think we had talked about a month or more ago, and the move was to have Mitzi be the chair. And I thought that was going to be effective back then, but that never did happen. So if that's what we want to do, I would certainly make a motion that we make Mitzi the chair of the Board of Selectmen effective when...
Tonight?
Tonight. Sounds good.
All right, I'll second that. Any discussion? Are you good with this, this timing of this?
I'm good with the timing.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, if you can. All right, so each end is yours.
Thank you.
I'd like to just open up the Finance Committee meeting at 6:35. Thank you.
All right, so first up at 6:30, David Freitz, we are going to go over your budget first, operational budget, and then capital request. So for everybody else, it's in page 53, on page 53 to 55. So David, I don't know if you want to kind of take it away and give us an overview of what you're doing with this budget?
Budgets, well, our time help, it's for the shelter, the shelter, for, you know, like our great budget and stuff.
Yeah, so I think, I know we had discussed one of the big line item changes, just to kind of let everybody know what's happening, is that the Animal Control Officer's salary was also inclusive of a number of different stipends each year, which was included in that second line down, which is the callback stipends for the ACO. So that's why you see that change over there, is to really say that he's been doing this job with all of the additional stipend positions on it anyways, has been paid that for years. So we wanted to kind of formalize it and put it out on the wage scale. Where we have on the wage scale, we'll have different individuals that aren't necessarily within the wage scale, but we have the letters, which are kind of underneath, so that we put the position of the Animal Control Officer there at $70,000. So that's kind of the big change over on that side, along with, I think, longevity increases. And other than that, there's not a single real change, it looks like, in the rest of your budget.
So there's no more, when I talk about a raise, it's the standard 3% raise, it's just saying what he's already been being paid. Is that true?
Yeah, so we went back and looked at W-2s for the past couple of years.
Right.
And so it includes stipends that were never part of his salary, but it was part of the job that he was doing.
Right, that he would have got paid for.
Exactly, yeah, so he was getting paid for it too. So I think that just, you know, it's one of those things that if and when, if you never retire, that, you know, will be something that we'll need to just kind of, you know, consider when we do go out to find a new ACO, and what does that mean, what does a job entail? And we'd probably, you know, be grateful for your help on that, to give us a range of what you think would be reasonable, I think, if you're still around and willing to do so, because we're now taking it out of it being a position that was on the wage scale at $49,000, and we're actually putting it to what it was, based upon all the stipends.
We can discuss that in 2025 or something.
2025.
Wow, wow. But why wouldn't it be the 76 to 46, which is on the second page? I guess...
Yeah, so that's really...
Because it's a combo of that longevity and the vacation buyback piece, which is here. So these numbers are affected because of the increase of this.
Okay.
So it corresponds to the percentage.
Right.
So instead of, for example, instead of the salary longevity going up 100 bucks, it's going up more because it includes that stipend piece now.
So the callback stipends of $35,000 was not the outside people, that is, Garcia and...
No.
Half of it was you.
Right, half was me.
Okay, okay, I get it.
Does Finance Committee have any questions? I mean, I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of the other line items on the budget?
No, everything was pretty normal. Nothing's really changed, so I understand how we changed the accounting, but that's about it, everything stays the same, so we're good. I'm good.
If I may, I do just have to say, David has a very minimal budget, because he raises so many donations, that he pays for a lot of animal, care for the animals through donations. He doesn't even really pay for food anymore. We still have thousands in there for food, it's all donations, so I just have to give David kudos.
We rented the shelter with donations too, we raised like $19,000 to make the shelter. We bought a snowboarder and generated this year for the shelter, that'll power the whole shelter, it's all donations. Nice job.
Great. Yeah, I know, we used to get those lists of the donations every month.
I know, I've asked Jen to, she hasn't been doing it, so I reminded her.
I've been saving them myself to give to Rita. They've got papers for the donations, so you'll have them. I could bring them tomorrow or something.
Okay, yeah, like events or something for the donations? Do you hold events, or how are you getting the word out?
Just people from Facebook, and we have like 1,300 followers, and they, we had a dog that was maybe $3,500 worth of this, and they paid for it. Of course, Tracy helps us a lot, Tracy's secretary, she gets us grants sometimes.
Organizations do hold events for David, and he'll go whenever he's...
True value, they're doing it for us now. When they raised two guys, they took over.
So let's talk about your capital requests too. And I think though, just before you kind of switch the pages, page 55, we have the vehicle list, because one of these items is to be replaced, or is a request to be replaced, and that's the 2005 that you're trying to replace?
The Colorado, yes.
Yeah, so, all right, so let's talk about your capital requests. So on here, we have two items, a new four-wheel-drive pickup truck to replace the 2005 truck, and to pave the driveway and the parking lots.
There's a tab in the back.
Page 123. Do you have a specific page on this?
Comes after...
There we go. David is on the magical unmarked page, it's 137, the unnumbered page. So I know that we've talked about this truck, and the fact that certainly I've seen it unable to hold a deer carcass without dragging down, breeding, and sparking. So I think, you know, at this point, I'd like to hear what you guys, you know, if you want to...
We checked the truck out today, I went over to the highway with Bill Freitz, the mechanic. The frame is rotted, plus we thought it wasn't just the frames, the body rails that go across that, the frame sits on there going, and that on the sending unit with the gas tank is that's going. I mean, it's 14 years old.
Yeah, I'd say it's probably time to get a new one.
Yeah, we did 1,120 calls last year through the police department. These are just the ones from this year that we do. That's not counting shelter calls. Plus, we bought 10 towns at the shelter, I don't know if anybody's aware of that. Yeah, we make money off the shelter.
Actually, the boarding pays the stipends for the assistant ACOs.
I see a different, so on the memo, you have $35,000 request, but on the five-year capital plan for the entire town, it says $30,000 for the vehicle.
That's my mistake.
Is that just a type of...
That's not a mistake. We haven't gotten quotes yet.
Okay, are you going to get them?
I talked to Billy Freitz to get an idea of how much it would be. David and I called him, and it was between 30 and 35. He'd be able to transfer the cap off of the current truck that he asked.
If I buy in a truck like the current truck, you can use all the lights off it, you can use the police radio and the cap, because the cap was specially made for that for the first year Colorado's come out. Moby's made that for us, it's got toolboxes on the side.
Madam Chair, is that what I'm supposed to say?
Whatever you want, Frank.
If I could just inject with David, you know, we work very closely with Animal Control, there's times that we need them out there right away. We've seen the condition of the vehicle, he's been driving for a long time, and it's, he does a lot with little, and he's long overdue to have a new vehicle, everything that he does, just the response that we need them to come out, we can definitely see, you know, there is a need for it.
Thanks. Okay, anyone?
Are you getting press quotes off of state contracts?
Oh, yeah.
MHQ?
Pardon?
MHQ, or are you just going with the basic?
We'll go on comp buys first.
Okay, yeah.
David, what are you doing with that other vehicle that we commissioned for you to use?
That's to carry the dogs to the vet's office, because state law now, we can't carry dogs in the back of a truck, it has to have ambient temperature of, you know, like, so we use that to carry the dogs to the vets and the wildlife, go into the Colorado. We picked up 75 deer hit by cars last year.
So even if he buys, which he should buy, a new pickup truck, a small size, he'd like the smaller size, like he has, the other vehicle, he cannot, in theory, put dogs in crates in the back of that pickup truck. So he would still use...
The other one's still used.
For that visit, so they put 3,100 miles on it, so I would certainly continue with that.
Yeah, we lucked out getting a public chief and stuff, that's why we use that far, because we can't carry dogs in the back of the, the state laws are all changing now, even the Animal Control side, we got to get recertified again and everything.
Does anyone have any other questions, or anything else you want to share about what David's proposing?
I'm all right with it, as long as it's the right size, you don't want to buy one of these monster four-wheel-drive Fords that you can't put anything in.
Actually...
It should be a small truck like he has.
You don't want a Raptor?
No, but I get the small, I want the same thing, because I can use everything off that truck. The chief just got it stuck right away.
No, that's fine.
No, it would be, the health agent has a GMC Canyon, which is the equal to the Colorado.
You just need something that's named of something in the West.
Yeah.
All right, and I guess no one has any other questions, thank you very much, David.
Thank you.
All right.
Do we go back to the driveway?
Yeah, do you want to speak about the driveway too?
I didn't know if you wanted to or not.
Sure, yeah, I mean, if you want to give a little...
The only reason I wanted to do that was because we have so much trouble, like plowing it, it rips it all, every year we put in another $1,000 worth of stones to repave it. Maybe we could just cut it down, you know, until it would be a smaller section, we don't need to pave the whole place.
For $20,000?
I don't know how much you can get done for that.
Yeah, do we have a quote on that, or that's an estimate?
That was Franklin's quote, and that wasn't the whole area, either that was the driveway up, and that was Franklin.
Because I don't know much about Franklin's line.
Okay.
I stayed out of it.
Yeah, so it's Franklin.
But Franklin did.
That was his quote.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know that, you know, we've talked about accessibility issues, people looking at dogs in the shelter, being unable to actually walk up to or roll up to the door itself, because it's a gravel lot at this point, so, you know, from a safety perspective and from a kind of a welfare perspective, I know it's been some of the concerns.
We adopted 140 dogs out last year, so we get a lot of people coming in.
Anybody else?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you to all three of you.
No problem.
Thank you to the Finance Committee.
All right, our fire chief is up.
You can have my seat, I got it warmed.
So this is on page 42, that's where the fire chief's budget starts. All right, Chief, take it away.
Take it away. Well, since I've never been through this process before.
I'll lead you blindly into it.
I may need some guidance. Do you want to start off with the capital plan, or do you want to discuss land?
I think, let's start with the operating budget, and I think it might be helpful just to kind of go through the changes in the operating budget, and what you're looking to accomplish with the operational budget for next year.
Starting on the salary and benefits side, basically, most of the changes you see, and if you go down from the second column from the right, most of the changes you see are contractual related, benefits related, so it's more or less, I don't really have much to do with the changes that you see, it's basically whatever compensation's been agreed to prior to this. You do see one addition, which is the $8,000 in special assignments over time, and basically that would give me a line item for, and it'll give me the ability to compensate my employees for any additional responsibilities that I assign to them, and it would give them the opportunity to maybe work outside of their normal working hours to accomplish whatever I set in their way. Going down to another additional change, there is an education incentive benefit, which is, did not appear in last year's budget, and that's because of who I promoted to the deputy chief's position. The prior deputy chief did not have a degree, so he didn't receive that benefit, and Will does have a bachelor's degree, so that's a change in his compensation. Other than that, we made some adjustments to the call shift coverage, it's not something I typically use, but what call shift coverage is, is when the full-time firefighters refuse to work a shift, or aren't available to work a shift, the call firefighters have the opportunity to work those shifts, and that's where that money would be drawn from. It's not something that's typically used very often, so I lowered that amount to make it a more realistic...
That's the $3,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, it's one of those things that, it doesn't get used all the time, but on occasion it does, I think it's been used once this year, and I actually had to fix that in our budget. So the other adjustments, as far as clothing, it's just, and longevity, that's just changes in personnel, changes in compensation levels for each person, most of it, as far as the expense side, it's basically a half a percent is new program, the rest of it is all obligations on my part. Is everybody okay to that point? I don't want to talk, speak to you.
So contractually, you, contractually, $75,000 increased, but you were still able to bring the, so it's a net positive for us, is what it looks like, despite the contractual, if you took the contractual obligations out, you still were able to lower the overall budget, that's great.
So, yeah, a 2.87% increase on the salary side, and, you know, I try to be conservative and lower some line.
That's a reduction of one position, though.
Well, right, so the third item, third item down is captain's salary that's not in the 2020 budget, that's not being filled. So that's how you kind of made the whole number.
It's a $6,000 benefit to me, to the chief.
Got it.
Yeah.
Still positive.
Yeah, I'll take a positive. So on the expense side, are we okay up to that? On the expense side, there's very few changes. One of the things that I've seen in past budgets is we kind of get, we go for a capital, we throw in the capital pan a turnout, like a group purchase or a bulk purchase of turnout gear, because it's fairly expensive, and where I come from, we do that usually in increments, we try not to create a slam, we don't really like to borrow for turnout gear, where if you replace, you're able to replace one or two sets a year, you can keep pace, especially with a smaller department like Lakeville's. So you see, do see a bump up, a 25% increase in the fire equipment supply line item, and that's the mindset there, is just to be able to keep pace with my, you know, replacing my turnout gear. Another thing too, that I'm going to try and do with my new hires, is not buy them turnout gear, they have rental programs, where typically firefighters go to fire academies, and they beat up the turnout gear, and it's worthless in two years, and so I'd rather beat up somebody else's gear, so I'm not going to buy new turnout gear for our firefighters, I'm going to rent it for the first few years. Going through, there's really very little changes, and part of the lack of change in my expenses and my operations budget, is to be honest, and to be transparent, it's a lack of maybe awareness on my part. When I get a better sense of, like, every week is a new discovery in the town, and every time I look into something, there's like a new can of worms opens up. So I'm reluctant to make alterations to things, even when they look like there's some cushion there, because I really don't have a, I don't want, I don't know what the next surprise is going to be. So it'd be irresponsible for me to make dramatic changes to my budget at this time. So if you do see a change, it's something that I've already kind of got a good handle of, and I made, you know, whether it's to save money or to spend money, it's based on that new awareness, and if you see something that's kind of set in stone, or not set in stone, but hasn't changed at all, it's due to a lack of awareness on my part, probably.
All right, anyone have any specific questions? All right, this is going faster than I thought it would.
Capital request from Claire?
Capital request will be back in the capital request section, so, yes.
Did you want to do emergency management? I know it's Dan, but it's...
Oh, yeah, we could do emergency management as well, I guess.
On the line item?
What's at the next page, 44?
44.
So it's, it's not in your budget, it's in emergency management?
Is this capital on emergency management?
No, this is operating.
But did you come up with this budget?
Uh, no, Dan did.
Okay.
But just where...
Have you seen this budget?
Not very, I'd be guessing.
Yeah, I just don't want to put him on the spot to go through a budget that he's not aware of.
It's exactly the same as last year, except for telephone, so...
Yeah, the telephone basically was on my expenses, and it's been transferred over.
I'm sorry, Mike, that I didn't forward that to you.
I'm hurt. I'm good, thank you.
It's a 56% increase with that telephone.
That telephone, yeah.
Now, I've funded some of Todd's percentages.
Don't work?
Don't work, we had something that was 110%, and so when we caught it, when Lorraine and I caught it, we would double check it.
Right, it's really just adding the $2,500 stipend to Danny Hopkins, which we all voted on back when we appointed him to be the Emergency Management Director, that's all, the rest of it's aside.
That was a transfer from my line item, from my salary.
Got it.
All right, so let's go take a look at the capital plan, there's a presentation that was put together, starts on page 1... 1.
When the nuclear safety bill would actually put this on...
John, is this driving insane? 127, it's 128.
I swear I numbered all, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, never mind that, it's, never mind, it's fine, it's fine.
All right, Chief, would you like to walk us through your capital requests?
So on page one, early on, I went to, one of the things I kind of wanted to figure out or develop a program for is the purchase of ambulances, or some of my more expensive higher ticket items, like cardiac monitors, CPR boards, things of that nature, and I kind of wanted to fund it through revenue from the fire department. Like, my mindset is to, you know, to connect the revenue that we generate to improving our medical services, it makes sense to me. And so I approached Todd, and I actually talked to Mitzi, and you put two CPAs in the room, and I needed a translator, but I, but they kind of, they, in the end, they translated it for me, and they, Todd recommended this creation of a receipts reserved account, and it's an account that's been created by Massachusetts General Law, and it basically provides a system for me to segregate some of my EMS revenue for specific purposes, and those purposes are basically, it's a very general statement, it says anything to do with EMS operations. So I can collect money and set it aside, and it's a revolving account, so it builds, as long as I'm, you know, it builds year after year, and when it comes time to replace one of my ambulances or expensive piece of equipment, I would follow the normal procurement program and rules, and then I would request that money to be spent on that specific item.
Should do yours too?
Apparently this isn't going over well.
I'll do my hell with the microphone.
I don't want anybody to hear it about the session. So as far as, you know, on page one slide two, it goes through basically the, how it's, how the program works, and what the rules are, as prescribed by the state. So this is on page three, on page two, excuse me, in the first slide of the town, it basically describes what I would want to, what I want to do with the money. And one of the key programs, and it wasn't really spelled out in the Mass General Law, so this is when I bounced it off legal counsel, one of the problems with qualified departments, and qualified departments represent a significant savings to this town, it's, they're, they're absolutely the backbone of my major instance, they all come in from home, they don't really do for the money, and they don't make a ton of money, so having a robust and active qualified department is like, it's gold to this town. So one of the things that we're dealing with is reduce participation in the call department, and it's Massachusetts-wide, it's Rhode Island-wide, it's nationwide, it's a problem we're all dealing with. So you have to become inventive, and figure out ways to attract qualified fighters and get them to stay and retain them once you have them. So one of the things I kind of thought of was to create a professional development program, and fund it through this reserve receipts program. So basically, I've known in the past that Chief Hopkins would pay for paramedic trains for his firefighters, and they really didn't have any skin in the game, and so really, you know, they didn't put a lot of effort in the past in the class, they didn't, you know, they bailed out, or they passed the class and went to work for a paid fire department, you know, two years later, and we were left with that bill and no benefit. So one of the things I wanted to put in there is a retention program, so I wouldn't front anybody any tuition for a paramedic program, EMT program, what I would do is reimburse them, and I'd reimburse them over time. And there's similar, there's similar programs on the police side, where basically if you leave after two years, you're going to, you're stuck with the academy bill and things like that, so the structure's there already legally, and I would just kind of replicate that program and apply it to this. So my plan is to market this, to, you know, we've already started marketing, we've gone into, upon equip, we've gone into the schools, we've created a, and we modeled, again, we modeled the police program, and we created an internship, and we tell them about these programs, where they can come into the fire department, and they can get their EMT certifications, and basically, I'm looking to have some funding mechanism to reimburse these people for the training that they could have. They're going to have skin in the game, they have to front the money, but I want to keep them around over four years or five years, and that, every year that they give me, they're going to get a little piece of that money back, in addition to whatever compensation I provide to them otherwise.
Back to the top, Mike.
Yes.
It talks about purchase of new ambulance, doesn't talk about fire trucks, is that purpose?
I can't.
Does that purpose, you can't?
Yeah.
No, that's okay.
My gray area...
I didn't know if you left it off, or it was inclusive when you talk about purchase big-ticket items, but that wasn't mentioned.
The one thing that I, I guess I could make a stretch, if we decide to, we can, I can license a fire truck as an ambulance, a non-transporting ambulance, and so, like, down the road...
It has to be EMT-specific, doing this statute marks.
That's fine.
And so...
We don't...
We can make that stretch if we have to.
We don't have to go there.
Okay. But like, that's, like, those, those things, the CPR boards and medication pumps, that equipment, like, it's great, but everything, like, if you look at it from big picture, like, everything's designed to improve our service, and I think it makes sense to take the revenue you make off of somebody's misfortune, or their ailments or illnesses, and to parlay that somehow into providing a better service next time around, it's just, it makes sense to me.
Mike, tell me how that works in terms of the allocation, is it all receipts? Can you designate a percentage, can it change year to year? Just kind of give us an overview from a budget perspective.
I think the program that we were discussing was anything in excess of, and thanks for asking the question, get me back on track with that, is anything in excess of what's the budget number is. So basically, it wouldn't be a burden on the town, whatever you decide is your magic number, you know, based on history and call volume trends, things like that, whatever you decide your revenue budget number is, that goes back to traditional use, goes into the general fund for use, anything in excess of that, comes back to that restricted receipts, the reserved receipts reserved account, excuse me.
Right, so that can fluctuate year to year, depending on the needs of the department, or depending on the needs of the town.
Exactly, like, you're not, you're not locked into, like, if you have a bad year...
Right.
Like, you budget high. Like, you budget high or budget, you know, you're more aggressive with your budgeting number and I get less.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's flexibility there.
Yep. I think what's great about it though is that it, it designates money for that purpose, which is always a need from the municipal perspective, but it, it ensures that there's something in there that we're contributing towards something we know is going to be a cost in the future. I mean, it's a great idea.
We originally, we're gonna do that back several, back several years ago, whenever that was, it was three years ago, five years ago, where we wanted to take, where we wanted to take a portion, because ambulances were basically $250,000, $50,000 per year.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna throw $50,000 into a particular account so that the ambulances would always be able to be funded.
Yep.
At the end of the day, we funded them anyways. So...
Right.
This is okay from ambulance receipts, it's when we talk about the budget aspect. What, what do we wanna budget at? Because we've used it, we've been fortunate enough, we've always put it back in the fire department. So you didn't get a new pump or you didn't get new ambulances out of the, out of the wind. You got those because you budgeted them. But unrelated to this, because we're only talking about ambulance fees, I, I don't object to putting money to the side until we talk about how much money we wanna put to the side.
Well, yeah, and I, I think that, you know, one of the things, if you look at what pulled into free cash this year, which really would be what was the excess, it's really what would be going to the reserve or the restricted receipts account. Because if you budgeted, I think we budgeted 425 last year, or 450, I can't remember exactly what it was, for ambulance receipts, 450. And so what actually came in was really 571. And so that excess 121 ended up in free cash at the end of last year's budget. And so that money then would otherwise, rather than going to free cash, would go into the, the receipts account. And so that would be earmarked for additional fire or EMS.
Right. But if you took this year's number, which would be maybe $100,000 more, if you said 450 was, was the baseline, and it comes in at 650, there'd be $200,000 flowing into this account. But you only need $50,000 to fund the ambulances, to fund the ambulances. The rest of it has always been in the operational budget. So what would happen if you put in $200,000 a year to fund ambulances? You will, you'll far exceed it, you're exceeding it by 400%.
Well, so, yeah, I mean, the, the thing is, it's not just strictly for ambulances.
It should be.
But I, I tend to disagree, because I think if you look at all the other additional equipment needs and if you wanna fund that program for qualified firefighters to be retained to eventually serve the town for a period of time, I think that, you know...
Well, you should come up with those numbers separately then.
Sure, you can budget.
You can come up separately with them.
Yeah.
And, and so, say how much of the budget is not a fixed asset.
Well, well, but the other side, you could do it from the other side as well, because when you go into the budget for the following year, you can look at the restricted receipts account as a source of revenue, similar to free cash as a source of revenue, that can go and offset all of the EMS expenses or portions of the EMS expenses that exist in the budget. So it can be a funding source as well. So say you wanted to keep a set amount of $250,000 in that account at any one point in time, and you have a, a year where there's a lot of ambulance calls and all of a sudden that account has gone to 350. Well, now you can take that hundred that's in there and you can actually push it back in as a funding source into the operational budget. And so, you know, and you can raise up the estimated receipts as well on the ambulance to exclude that coming in.
Right. So you can hold it at 250 if you want.
Yeah, so you can manipulate it how you want to.
Right. What happens is if you put too much into a, the bank, if you will, one can say the $250,000 is there for the ambulance, but if it's 500 or 600,000, large accounts then lead to spending that you may not need to spend. So it's no different than, than someone's E and D account, whether it's the park department, whether it's the transfers, I call it the dump. I, I'm not objecting, but I'm saying that if we put more than $60,000 a year in there, I got a problem with it because it doesn't have the purview of, of what are you doing with it necessarily.
It's my understanding that if, if I had a capital plan, it would still, and that was the, the funding source, I would still present it within my capital plan and, and so you would know what I was spending my money on and adjust...
We know we're gonna spend $50,000 a year on ambulances. That's a, that's a fixed cost that no one objects to. I just need to understand, if you overburdened or the balance gets too big, what's the mechanism to get it out?
Well, the problem is if you, you don't have to let it get too big. And that's, that's what you do, because it's a, it's not a set it and leave it. If you set it and leave it, you have a problem, potentially. But maybe not. But if you set it up as an option...
She had an opportunity to say, "Set it, forget it."
I was thinking, I was waiting for that.
No, set it, set it and misspend it. No reflection of view.
No.
So, so it's no different than if the park department has $300,000 in their fund account, they spend every last penny of it. So if it's to fund ambulances, I don't have a problem with that. And, but when we did marijuana, if you will, we had talked about taking those, those funds...
That was funny. And that's what we hit me.
We had talked about taking those funds and funding first responders, OPEB liabilities and fix the roads. So, the $50,000, I'm happy to put $50,000 aside for ambulances. I'm not willing to put to the side 150 to 250,000 to the side and have to go through adjusting it up and down.
Right. No, I see your point. Your point is, is that if you, if you, you put a mechanism in there specific for, for that purpose, it, it could lead to abuse.
Always does. Not could.
Well, that depends on...
You have the money, we have free, let's have Michael continue. I don't object to putting money to the side. It's the amount...
Yeah.
The amount.
Chief Mills did.
The thing of it is, a point I'd like to bring out, in the town of Dayton, they put money from the ambulance, in the ambulance account. And it's also used in that ambulance account, in five years, he paid for and bought two brand-new fire trucks. So it's not gonna be used abusive, abusable. Well, it can't be used for fire trucks. What? Yes, you can. Don't tell me again. This account, he just said it can't be used for fire trucks. He just said that in the beginning. That was the first question. How did the town of Dayton...
They must have set up a...
Yeah, so I, I think, yeah, they, they may have had a revolving fund instead. But I think that, I mean, ultimately, the question on the table is, you know, creating a reserve for the restricted receipts account, which is, because the ambulance generates revenue, we've been budgeting a certain amount in the budget. What's left, what happens with it, is it goes into free cash right now. And it can be used for anything, any department, not necessarily related to the place in which it was generated from, which would be the ambulance service. So if all of a sudden we find ourselves in a situation where we don't have funding available for capital needs to continue the ambulance service, it's not necessarily that people are gonna choose not to take the ambulance, per se. I guess it's not really the case. But we may end up in a situation where we might not have an ambulance ready to go, we may have a breakdown, we may need to call mutual aid. So I think there's certainly a, a level at which we need to keep stability with our ambulance service and their equipment. I think what we've been seeing over the years is, and we started out with the ambulance revenue at 300,000, 200,000, 300,000, 400,000, now we're bringing in $600,000 every single year. So what I would hate to do is to get to a point where we look at trying to fund the capital needs of that service and we're unable to do so. You know, the other thing too is, I think it's a great tool when it's actively managed, but you can't just set it and forget it. Or when we did marijuana...
Listen, I, I don't, I didn't disagree, I, I had brought it up years ago to do the fund, but it was $50,000 a year.
Right. So don't you see a benefit of having money earmarked specifically just for EMT, just for these purposes? I mean, I do in the sense that if you're in a tight budget year, that department is guaranteed money.
We have, we have never not bought an ambulance. We've never not bought these.
No, but that's not my point. My point is, is that in a tight budget year, money that would typically spill into free cash, it could be grabbed on a town meeting floor, for example.
Could be. It hasn't been. It has not been.
We've had money grabbed in town.
It has happened.
No, it's been grabbed for schools, it's never been grabbed...
That's what I'm saying.
It's never been grabbed away from...
No, no, but that's my point, is that if you have it earmarked specific to a town department...
Ambulances, I don't, I don't mind.
Is there a way to word it that it's like up to, or is it all in excess? Can you phrase it?
I believe you can put a set amount in, if I'm not mistaken. I think Todd had said that we could do that each year.
In excess of two...
Yeah, or a percentage or an excess of whatever.
I absolutely do not object to putting money aside for ambulances. Absolutely do not.
Well, yeah, I think it should be ambulance and other maybe non-recurring or special expenses that support the department.
Let's, let's put some dollars on the other items.
Because there's other, yeah, I think...
We've gotta put dollars on the other items.
Yeah, so supplies.
Because they're already in the operational budget. So you gotta reduce the operational budget if you're gonna...
There are more capital items that we're talking about?
They're, they're all, they're all capital items in a new, one new program.
Well, listen, when we did, when we did the 150-some-odd thousand dollars last year for capital, which I have in front of me somewhere, it would have been nice to get a grant for that. So there's a disincentive to, to load up a bank account. You don't get, you don't get grants because, you don't have to get grants because you have funds in the bank. But I, I'm agreeing with the ambulance.
Yeah.
So we can move, I want you to move on, but I wanna come back to it at a later date about how you're balancing the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all. Go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Do you want me to speak on this subject anymore or move forward?
No, no. We're done.
All right.
We're done with that page. Why get the jaws alive, the jaws alive? We, we have one on the budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we buy it. It's not even a question. It shouldn't be that we don't have the money. We said that we were gonna buy it anyways. Go ahead.
So, do you want me to advocate for the jaws of life or just move on?
Well, no, it's, it's on, it's on your, it's on your capital budget.
It seems like the hard one's 16 years old and...
Forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
It was forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's not even a question.
It's not, it's like, it's an overreaching, okay.
We've never not funded the fire department.
Well, that would be something that could be paid for, right? Out of the...
Oh, absolutely.
Receipts account. So just...
Oh, it could be paid for out of this. Yeah.
Right, yeah.
I get that. Doesn't make any difference. We've always funded it.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm on page four.
Page one.
Moving past the jaws.
Command vehicle.
Thank you, thank you. All right. This would be replacement of the deputy's vehicle. It has the call sign of car two. It's a 2008 Ford Taurus, about 100,000 miles on it. Basically, it has a, it's not an ideal fire apparatus, a fire command vehicle. Basically, it's a, it's a two-wheel drive, a front-wheel drive car. It won't get through snow. It's not exactly in great condition. It is suitable for, like, say, running errands and going to the academy, things, things like non-urgent calls. What I would like to replace it with is like an F-150, a light pickup. And, and basically, that gives us some flexibility. Right now, we have one pickup truck in, in the department and it's, we're not sure how many miles on it because the odometer doesn't function anymore, has some, some mechanical issues, and it's our only tow vehicle. So having a second truck, a pickup truck that suits the command needs and the ability to go through bad weather and, we also have a second tow vehicle, so if one's out of service, we, you know, we get a, a call on one of the ponds, we can get the boat or the, the hovercraft out there really fast. So it's kind of, that's my reasoning behind the pickup truck. To me, the, the command vehicle is older and it's just, it's just not suitable to the mission. And I think a pickup truck's a little more flexible and, and cost-wise, it's, it's similar to the price of an SUV.
The, somewhere, I certainly don't object to it. I don't know whether it should be a four-door, it's just simply not showing, so that you can put more bodies in it if you need to. And the separation of contaminated gear, I think you said somewhere that it can't be inside of a pickup, that is, you wanted it to be separated. Well, this doesn't let you separate it, I don't think.
No, it, it would, the final project, the picture's kind of misleading. I envisioned a cap over the back of the truck, like a, a tom, so that's where the gear would go.
Maybe a four, maybe a four-door, that's how I'm leaning towards.
Yeah, it's, trying to be conservative. I figured it'd be a little bit extra money for a four-door.
Well, if, if you're thinking that you have to move people...
I think most of them are four-doors, aren't they?
Yeah, the extra cap has...
Most of them, yeah.
Yeah. Even the extra cap has four doors.
Yeah, I just figured this was clip art.
Yeah.
I really did.
I hand-drove, I have...
Some...
We use this clip art.
That one did.
I did.
Now we know.
So, that's, that's basically the, it's looking for a better vehicle, something that suits the mission a little bit better. Any questions from that?
No.
All right, here's the big one. I'm ready for my...
Get ready.
Get ready.
A new car!
All right. So my, my biggest request is a, is for a new fire engine. And basically, the, the one I'd like to replace is a 2003 Pierce Sabre. And you're gonna notice when you see down on the slide below that it's not my oldest vehicle, my oldest engine. There's several reasons. The biggest reason for me is its, its reliability and the burden that it's been on my, my repair and maintenance budget. And the, the third major point to make is that it doesn't suit the mission here in Lakeville. It's a truck that we probably shouldn't have ever bought because it doesn't have the water supply. Obviously, you guys know that, that most of our town isn't covered by hydrants. So usually you have a, a, a pumper that has a minimum of a thousand gallons in those situations. So you can, you can hold on and put fire out until the water shuttle begins. So this doesn't certain, suit the mission. This, when it's in service, it's actually put into, it's crazy to me. Coming in from the outside, it scared the hell out of me. It's put into a, an attack mode. It's, it's the first-run fire apparatus in this town. And because they put it in that mode because if that truck fails, you can pump through it. And it's the, it's the truck most likely to fail. And it's, it doesn't pull a draft, so they can't have it at the water supply. And it doesn't have very much hard suction. So if you're thirty feet off of water supply, you're not going to reach it, which is the max. That's supposed to be the max distance from water supply you can pull from. So the, the, the reasoning is, is sound, but it's also scary. We're, we're going to put our least reliable truck in front of a house, and that's the one that's heavily involved in life safety. That's the one that our firefighters are depending on to, to stay safe. And, and the reason is, is because if it fails, the second truck can, in an emergency situation, can pump through it. And, and it's kind of a, it's kind of a scary thought.
So explain to me what's unreliable about it.
Well, um, if you look at...
I mean, you, you just said we're putting a least reliable truck at a house.
Yep.
So what makes it unreliable?
Um...
Because we've had it for a while. It's the first I've heard that it's unreliable.
The six fires that I've had since I've been here, it's only made one of them. It's, it's been out for mechanical failures for the other five. It cost me eighteen thousand dollars to fix this year. It cost fourteen thousand dollars to fix last year. It's averaged nine thousand dollars in repairs over the life of the engine and repairs. It's, uh, if you compare it to Engine Three, which is, is ten years older than Engine Two, Engine Two, it cost me an average of seven hundred and sixty-five dollars per year. So...
Maybe you should buy another one like that one then.
I can, I, I don't mean to, like, I don't want to be confrontational, but like buying...
Oh, I will, okay. Go ahead.
I know. A wise old fire chief told me never to buy a, a used fire truck because he said that a fire, fire chief will never get rid of a reliable piece of fire apparatus. The, the town of Lakeville, as it gets busier and busier, the used fire apparatus are more likely to fail. We're rolling the dice every time you use an older piece of apparatus. And, and the mechanical failures are more likely to happen with the frequency of use. So it's, it's just an odds game. And I think, uh, I think we're, we're transitioning to that, that time where we can, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're in need of reliable, newer fire apparatus. Uh, I just, we have, in the fire department I came from, we have a 1989 Maxima in service. And we've bought and sold two fire trucks since then. And the reason we still have that eighty-nine in, in service is because it never breaks down. It always runs, it gets to the fire, pumps water.
The one we got rid of never broke down either.
Yeah.
So the, the lack of confidence part of it was, because you've mentioned it here somewhere.
Yeah, twice failed.
Twice failed.
Twice failed, it's the state inspection.
Right. And so talking to the town mechanic, one, he was never involved in it. So whatever repairs were done, were not done under the purview of giving any direction that I know to the repair people. I think they, it's like going in and saying, fix the rear end, when it's not the rear end, it's the front end of the car. So... But talking to the mechanic, as far as the, the body structure, which should be shored up, he is confident that he can find a place that under his direction, he fixes it properly. That's where the money was spent the last year, to the best of my knowledge. It can be done. This is not a big deal to fix that part. That gets the reliability back in because it's been off the road being fixed without any direction as to what to fix. The town mechanic was never involved in any of it whatsoever. I said, did you direct this repair place? What should be done? Absolutely not. Wasn't even involved. So I've talked to him, I talked to him again, I talked to Franklin again. And the truck should have bracing, which is done all the time. We do it all the time on our trucks, and we should do it on this truck to make it indisputably safe. It's not to Mickey Mouse it is to make it indisputably safe. The reliability aspect is because it was always out, being messed around with no direction, with no town mechanic involved at all.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. The, I was kind of handling, handling this truck. When I got here, this truck was no ready to be found. And it was out for, for frame repairs and it was...
Which never got done because I don't know that anyone told him he fixed the frame, but not the frame that anyone objected to.
From what I've seen, he kind of sandblasted the frame and, and kind of painted it. That it wasn't real.
He did. He did. Under whose direction? No one ever identified the problem to it.
So I think, though, we have multiple issues or multiple things to consider, right? So we have reliability, which you're trying to address through repairing the frame.
You, you fix it, that's all.
But then we have the issue of the pump size and, and what it can hold in. Which is not, or the gallon size is not something that it can...
Part of the gallon size from the previous regime was, the greater the capacity, we had trouble fitting it into the station. So we went to seven fifty gallons. The new pumper is how many gallons?
One thousand.
One thousand. So we did that, but we paid a gigantic premium making it a custom shot and frame.
I think Engine One was five fifty, right?
Five fifty, right. That's because we custom made it to add that two hundred and fifty gallons.
So is that an issue with the size of the bay?
Right. And so whether it's seven fifty or whether, I'm, I'm only talking about the reliability aspect of the truck. If you want to spend four hundred thousand dollars on a truck that had two hundred and fifty gallons and you're telling me that's a good idea, I'm not so sure it is.
So I think, though, in terms of the replacement schedule for the trucks anyways, I think as long as you, if you've bought a new one, you kept it in good mechanical shape, how long do you get out of a truck?
You can get twenty years out of it.
Twenty years. Twenty years. Because you don't put any miles on them. I mean, they, they run, but, uh, you don't put any miles on them for the most part. So only the ambulances that are running constantly for that.
Having not been here, I look at the data and the data year after year after year. So that, that's my most expensive truck to maintain and operate. That's the truck that responds to, um, the least number of calls because it's out of service. So I don't think it's, I mean, it, it's true that the frame, it was the reason it failed state inspection. It was the reason that we went off and, and had, I think it was twenty-seven thousand dollars in repairs done to the frame or that's what it was contracted out for. It, it's, it returned from that work and failed, promptly failed state inspection again.
Find the exact same guy.
Yeah.
It wasn't the Department of Transit. It's, if you ever met, did you meet those guys?
Yeah.
They would fill, they would fill the tarp if they fill a new cap.
It's like a lawyer. You, you can shop around for a lawyer to give you the opinion you want.
No, that's, that's not the case. Well, not the case.
I'd like to hear from the FinCon, if you guys have any thoughts on this.
We can, let me say this. We can always come up with money. We can always come up with money.
Well, my, my question is always if there's a need for, and I think as we look through the capital plan, I mean, the capital requests, we take money that's one-time money for things that we have where, you know, we sell the assessors building, we sell land on Howland Road. We have, you know, water tower proceeds. We also have money that comes in from free cash from tax title every single year that we kind of put in. And what we've been doing through our policies that we developed with the finance committee was really to say we're going to use one-time money on one-time things. And we're trying to develop a policy as to how much money should we have in stabilization to kind of get us through. What we've been doing, if you look at the debt schedule, which I think is somewhere in this, in this packet too, is the debt schedule has been being paid off and being reduced over time. Which I'm not saying we want to necessarily take some of the freed-up operational cash that was used to pay debt service payments and throw it back into operational side. But I think that there's a level of debt that the town should typically have that's healthy to have in its operational budget. And I think, you know, from that perspective, if we're looking at something that is a capital need, that we now have the money at this moment in time that's going to save us for another twenty years so that we don't have to redo this, I'm more in favor of looking at, you know, how can we get the most bang for our money now? And if this is going to be something that's pushed off a year, but possibly is a safety issue, I'd rather see that money be used now.
And how much more money are you going to spend on it to fix it this coming year?
Well, if that's another twenty thousand every year.
We're going to spend ten thousand dollars more to have it fixed under the direction of the town mechanic, which we should have done in the beginning.
How much time will that buy us?
Years, I believe. Years.
But within inadequate number of gallons.
But you can always come up with money, all I've seen, because you go on to the next truck. The next truck, I believe, was further out in the, in the replacement schedule, I think. And when a truck, there should never be a safety issue. So whatever safety issue it is, it should be fixed.
So, but the one that we're going to consider replacing is the 2003. And you're saying we get twenty years out of it, which is four more years. So either we're probably...
Four more years for ten thousand dollars is what I'm saying. Someone else is saying something different. I'm, I'm saying fix it for ten thousand.
That would be if we actually maintained it.
To me, I work from the mission back.
Yeah.
The engine doesn't serve the mission. It's not...
That's what I was going to say.
It doesn't, it, you know, if I'm putting it, I'm putting my least reliable piece of apparatus in front of a fire because it's, it's the least reliable and, and everybody has the least amount of confidence in it. That's not the right way to do business.
But you also said that you wouldn't have bought the ladder, the ladder truck we have, too.
No, I wouldn't have.
So we would have bought a ladder truck for nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
No, I would have bought a...
Maybe. That we, that we don't, that we don't like, so instead we bought one for seventy-five thousand dollars. Thank God you just don't like the seventy-five thousand. I get it.
No, I never said that. I said that I would buy a quin. There's a com- a quin is a combination of fire truck, ladder truck. So I would, I would decrease my fleet by one piece of apparatus. So I would, I would have three trucks out the door instead of four because there's a, there's one truck that serves both missions. So that's, it doesn't make sense to me to buy a ladder truck that doesn't, that can't do both things. So that's why I didn't, I wouldn't have bought that ladder truck. That's, that's what I said.
Right.
And I think, you know, again, as we kind of move into funding of these capital requests as we move forward, you know, in, in my, in my observation, I would look to put a ban out there on that, which is upon anticipation note, which would be essentially a five-year repayment on that four twenty-five that's on there. If you look at the debt schedule, and we'll get to that as we kind of move through the budget process, we have a hundred thousand dollars as dropping off the debt schedule from the operational budget next year. The first payment on the ban would be due next year, too. So it all would tie in so that there'd be no change in the operational budget from the debt perspective by funding this large capital purchase and putting it through that way.
Funding it is always the easy one. The highest part is saying, I don't know that we should do it. That's all. I'm saying for ten thousand dollars, you're going to get four more years out of it. So neither here nor there. But when we get into the budget, the, the funding, funding's easy. It's a taxpayer's money. And you always raise it. There's not a problem raising funds. You're in a municipality. So in, in funding a fire truck out of the funds from the Howland Street property is a piece of cake. So we can get into that as we, as we go further into the budget.
I think that the fire truck is like a direct service to the town. So I think that if your fire chief's an expert in that and he's telling you that we need it, I think that it's a worthwhile investment that the taxpayers would find beneficial.
I'm addressing only the reliability aspect and the lack of confidence which was related to failure by the Department of Transportation. The truck was inadequately fixed with no direction. We should have involved the town mechanic, fixed it right once. And I'm saying it can be fixed right again for ten thousand dollars.
I don't think it's a guarantee that it would be for ten thousand.
Well, just because it's a small amount of money, it's, it's not a complicated thing to fix.
Do you think it's ten thousand one time or ten thousand every year like it has been?
Ten thousand one time. You should involve the town mechanic. First of all, that's why we have one.
Right, but we're never going to change the issue of if it doesn't serve the mission with ten thousand dollars.
Right, right. That's all. We can move on.
Yeah, do we have anything else?
I'm going to talk about it.
Wasn't the truck you're talking about bought secondhand?
Yeah, exactly.
Why would you suppose the town that sold it got rid of it?
Are you asking me?
No, I'm not asking you because you weren't here.
All right.
The readministration did it.
Well, you have inspectors inspected. So it's on a recall.
First of all, why was it bought secondhand? You don't buy secondhand fire trucks.
So I'm okay with not...
You don't fix a fire truck that has a bad chassis.
So I'm okay with not rehashing the past because we're here? So I, and I totally appreciate all the opinions, but we're, we're talking a lot about things in the past and I think we're really trying to address the things in the future. So... Anyone else has any questions for Chief O'Brien?
My only concern with buying a fire truck right now, and I think you make a good point as to why we should, but, um, I hate the idea of having two fire trucks so close together because when they go, we lose both of them.
And that's a problem. And, and I see it. And, and typically, like in a replacement program, obviously you just dagger them out. And, and that should tell you about what I, what, how, how serious I am about the need. This isn't about one problem with, with this fire truck. It's about a history of, of liability issues. And, and I wasn't here. I'm looking at the data. I'm looking at the repair records. It's, it's, it's year in and year out of repairs and repairs right away, right after we bought it. And I could line up twenty, twenty-five firefighters behind me that would have all the war stories that went along with those repair things. I'm just looking at the data. The data tells me that, that we, we, I invest or I invest. I spend the majority of my repair and maintenance budget, year in and year out, on that piece of apparatus.
So would we be able to sell it to anyone or is it just like going to be done?
No, no.
No one's going to be saccharine to that?
I could get trade value.
I had a fire truck birthday party.
There's no value without fixing the frame. There's no, there's no trade value.
I don't think I was there for that one.
There's no trade value.
They would give me something.
I wouldn't sell it to someone without fixing it.
Yeah, it was an old fire truck that they use for birthday parties. They, you made money off it.
Is that going to be a fire truck for everything now?
No, no, the truck, listen.
Got to drive down the street.
Listen, the frame should be fixed in either case unless you bring it to Zion's and just junk it. That's all.
Getting back to your point, when, when we have a situation where there's two, two fire engines close together, one will always be the first-run engine and the other one will be a second-run engine. And the first-run engine will go out on all the calls and that one will age faster. And so that second apparatus kind of stays in that second run. And, and your, your life expectancy probably increases to twenty-five years because that first-run apparatus will bounce back from first to third. So that will have one piece of apparatus that, that will live its life in a second-run capacity. Less mileage, less wear and tear, and, and the lifespan increases on the other side.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm glad I could bring some sunshine to the evening.
No, no, I think it's fine. It's an, it's unreliable truck. It should have been, uh, I believe the town mechanic should always be involved. I asked him if he gave any direction to anyone. They didn't. So what you do is you go into a dealer and say, fix my noise. And you get a three thousand dollar bill and the noise isn't fixed. This is different, but it's very similar to that. There was, there was no direction given. But you'd have to fix it if you want to sell it and get any amount of money, you'd fix it. Otherwise, it goes to Zion's junkyard, gets stripped and do it to Zion's.
I want to apologize to the police chief. I hope we didn't change the mood of the room, make this harder for him. Oh, no.
Right, 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 right.
So anyway, anything else? I'm sorry.
No, no.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are you going to stick around?
Absolutely.
We haven't been back yet.
Okay.
And I forgot my glasses, so I might be, you see me holding out.
Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Are they ladies?
When you get older, Frankie, you always carry two pair of hands.
I had the camera right there. You look great.
Oh, I like the little size.
I see how it goes.
Chief, I'm ready.
All right, so, uh, Chief, if you want to give us kind of the overview, kind of similar to what you hope to accomplish with this budget, some of the major changes, we'll start with the operational budget. It's on page thirty-six, and I know everybody should have received an updated page thirty-six and thirty-seven, which includes a breakout of the new proposed communications department from the police budget. So can you talk about that a little bit as well? I think that'd be helpful.
Okay, sure. On the personnel side, you'll see a few increases that's outside of collective bargaining agreement that we negotiated raises. One being an increase in patrolman salary, putting in for an additional patrolman. Not to hop on the same thing I say every year, but I've been here thirty-one years and our department has an increase in size. It was seventeen when I started, it's eighteen now, but we have an SRO. So we have really the same amount of staff from thirty years with call volume probably five times the amount. And the reason being for putting in for the patrolman's position is to make a full-time detective, which we've had in years past and we've had to reallocate manpower to the road. This would allow us to function with a full-time detective. Currently, we have on a part-time basis, he's taken off patrol, which shortens patrol to do investigative functions. So that's where you see the, the increase there. The other large number you'll see is in overtime wages, which we have doubled from forty thousand to eighty thousand. As the department's constituted, when we run a night shift, if somebody takes a night off for a vacation, personal day, we run short on that shift. We don't fill. If we have time to move somebody, we'll move somebody off a shift, shorten another shift because we've never been funded fully in overtime. It gets to the point where we've lost manpower, officers leaving for other departments because of the constant moving shift. I can, I can see why they would do that. And it hurts in recruitment knowing, you know, when you hire, you have to tell somebody, you may bid a certain shift, but we're going to move you off that shift within forty-eight hours. It's just no way to function for the police department. So that eighty thousand will be able to keep people on their shift and, and fill, uh, fill those open shifts as they come out through the year. That would, uh, three to eleven and eleven to seven shift would be able to be filled. Everything else, unless you have anything, pretty much is, is where we were the previous year or could be a slight increase due to where we project it. Going over to the expense side.
Chief, just a quick question.
Yep.
So, um, so I know that we're looking to increase it by forty thousand for, for the overtime. What would the difference be if we hired, instead of one, we hired two? So, because obviously there's a work-life balance component to it that people... That said, I understand that there's also a financial component that people do like with overtime. But, um, but the work-life balance piece, um, so would hiring another officer reduce that back to forty and just increase it by their salary and benefits and everything else?
Or not really. It's not going to work that way.
Yeah, I mean, with their scheduling, it's tough to say that that officer would decrease, you know, the movement. I don't necessarily though think it would because you're still going to have movement in those shifts. So I think there still would be an increase in overtime. So I don't know as though you would see that, that big of a cost saving. So as we go down to, actually, Mitzi, you want me to talk about the, before I go to expenses, about the communications?
Yeah, because most of it's all salary-related, so yeah.
Yeah. So as you can see on the, the new one that was handed out today, we took out the communications section, which was... we took out the communications section, which was essentially our dispatchers. We've had talks over the last month about where we're going to be dispatching for the fire department as well as making communications its own separate entity, which I think would work in a better situation than what we have. To have the police department serving as a function of dispatching fire would kind of cause some issues along the way. And we thought that having its own department with its own person in charge of that department, things would flow better as far as information, training, because you're going to have to get the fire aspect side of it. So Mitzi had asked me to take that out of our budget, and so that way you could see this, where the communications would be taken out, $298,000. I recommend that if we do this to, in the training, at least, you put a dollar in there because there is some 911 grant money for dispatcher training. So we'd at least have that line item for training. And the only increase I would see in it would be you'd have the communications director and go in-house to whatever the board of selectmen would negotiate for a salary with that individual. But I don't see a large increase there. The increase that you see in part-time dispatches from $9,000 to $30,000 represents what we think will be additional part-time dispatches throughout the year, dispatching both police and fire. There'll be an obvious increase in workload.
I think it's important to note, too, what would happen for the hourly wages for the communications director. That would be a reshifting of the line item, again, probably a little bit of an increase. But from, you know, we wouldn't need as many personnel in the dispatchers if we had another communications director. So I think that's why we have the increase in the part-time dispatchers coming in, because you'd be able to decrease a body in the dispatcher line. So it wouldn't be a full, whatever the salary is, it wouldn't be a full addition to what's on here. It would be kind of a reshuffling of some of those line items.
And that could be a working supervisor that, you know, able to work shifts and dispatch.
And that person would roll up to you still, or it would roll up to?
No, it would be its own separate entity. I've spoken with the fire chief about it. I've kind of come up with, we're working on some accreditation policies, which would fall under a communications center, what we need from the communications. And I know Mike, Chief O'Brien, has talked about, you know, doing something similar with the fire department. So probably what we would do is maybe monthly meetings with whoever that communications director is, make sure there's the flow of information, if there's any issues. I think now's the right time to do it, where, you know, we are going to take over fire dispatch and move it into a new facility.
And are you guys currently using police officers to cover the shifts?
Yeah, not too often. It does happen once in a while. We've actually reduced the amount of officers that are trained. It just became a waste to keep them, because they weren't getting repetition, you know, on the desk. You know, they try to work it, you know, once every year is a little tough. So we've reduced that, so, you know, we only have a couple that are actually qualified to do so. They have to do continuing education with 911.
So the communications director won't report to either of you?
Report to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, essentially through, really through the two chiefs.
Yeah, they become a service provider, kind of an independent service provider, to meet the needs of both departments. And I think the concern is that if they're under the police department, it becomes an administrative kind of aspect of the police chief's job, specifically when it's really a service provider to fire and police. So if you have a supervisor dispatcher that kind of takes on that administrative aspect, it really, I think it's the best way to do it because they're going to be providing that service to two departments. And it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for the police chief to be tailoring dispatch needs or services to a fire department. It's just not his job.
Well said. Thank you. So as we go into the expense side, you'll see some increase, you know, almost doubling in electricity and heating fuel. And I'll say I'm just taking a shot in the dark. I have no clue in the new station what our heating electricity is going to be. I mean, we're doubling, you know, square footage. I know it's going to be more energy-efficient building, but I think really none of us can put a dollar amount.
Do you really think that's going to be more energy-efficient?
What's that?
Do you really think it's going to be more energy-efficient?
Well, I take the code, right? It's an all-energy efficient.
Like the roof, roof, roof? How could that be more energy-efficient?
Two heating systems. Do you saw gas and oil in this building?
No, we have oil to heat it, but we have propane for our generator, so that's right. So those are kind of the big numbers there. When it, as far as the expense side, I see small increases just based on where we are this fiscal year, just cost increases of things. Do have, it went from $12,000 to $17,000, and it's called supplies, bullets, and ammo. That's basically all our supplies within the department for equipment. And we have several bulletproof vests that will be expiring, so I increase that to $17,000 for this year. Other than that, pretty much everything's self-explanatory there.
What do we do with expired bulletproof vests?
With the expired ones? We keep them. If we have somebody that, obviously somebody that starts, it's about a six-week, six to eight weeks to get a new vest. So they'll have to use one that's expired during that time. I'll say, you know, reserve officer, or somebody that doesn't have a vest, we can utilize them that way.
The low person that told you to get some expired ones.
George, do you know anyone who did that, right?
It's like the car fireflies are getting used equipment.
Understood. I wish we could rent them, though. That's a good idea with the fire equipment.
Slightly used vest.
And buy new shoes.
All right, any other questions on Frank's operational budget?
Nope.
No? All right. Page 123, back to the capital. So Chief, what are you asking for this year?
For 2020, we have, we're putting in for one marked police cruiser to replace one of our existing ones. Wouldn't be purchasing it right at the beginning because we're probably looking at about, it'll be up to probably $130,000 by late fall. So probably wouldn't be a purchase right off the bat, at least midway through the year. And replacing another one is one, an unmarked police cruiser, which would replace one that we have with very high miles, $170,000 miles. So at a total cross, cost of the two cruises is $67,673.
Now, we had, I guess that $165 mileage was the one, I think, we did it in engine on at one time, and we were just using it for details.
The unmarked?
The, you talked about replacing one that had $160,000 miles on it. The only one I see is an old 2013 Ford Interceptor. And we were just using that not as an active...
That's used every day.
Used every day.
Yeah, that's our court. We use that for court.
Okay, okay. We use it for 5,600 miles. That's the one the court officer has taken to court. But it's not used, it's not used as an everyday Ford Interceptor.
Yeah, we use it on details, not on patrol, not on patrol.
Right, okay.
Special, special.
Right, so that's the one that you want to replace.
Want to replace that with the unmarked.
Replace that with an unmarked.
Correct, because it is an unmarked, that one.
Okay, and then which other one are you replacing? Do you need to look at this? Do you have the number that you want to replace?
Going to use the glasses for a minute. Hold on. All right, so it's 164, so it's going $94,000. So I'd say by mid-year, that car's going to be in the $130,000.
164 is right. It is at $94,000, 272.
So we're looking at midway through the year.
So that's the one that you want to replace?
Correct.
Okay, and the other one is an unmarked one that we use in theory to go to court.
Right, that is 140. I don't know if you have the cruiser number.
Yeah, that one there is 143.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And we still have, we'll call it, at least four cruises that average greater than $40,000 miles. And which is fine. I mean, you can certainly say that they're actively being used. And of course, there's two new ones that we put $15,000 to $17,000 miles on those two.
Wait, those are your lower miles.
So, right, so they have low mileage. So are we high mileage in four, or are we high mileage in five or six?
I'd say your high mileage cars are going to be driven by patrolmen as opposed to supervisors, because they may have more administrative duties. So you'll see the two lower miles are probably going to be supervisory vehicles.
Okay, okay, so there's four cruises that exceed $40,000 miles a year typically. And we replace them pretty much every two and a half years at the, two and a half years at the most. Maybe you can squeeze through. Okay, mine isn't to squeeze that. It's just to understand that we buy between two and three cruises per year, which is what we've been doing.
Exactly. And one of the other things that we did put in for this year is level-three ballistic shields, seven of them, as well as eight ballistic helmets. For the ballistic shields were $19,950, the helmets were $2,600. I only have to speak to, you know, the dangers of a police officer out there, which was seen in the Commonwealth, you know, in the last year, issues that we've had throughout the country. I think this just gives the officers the right equipment to have in the cruises if there is an active shooter situation. It's been long overdue to have this equipment. It would be in each one of the cruises in the event that there was an incident, that they would have that. Hopefully, it's never used. Hopefully, it collects dust, and we never have to think about it. But it would be nice to, you know, have the equipment for them.
Wasn't there some move underfoot, Michael, that the fire department would have some type of mandatory gear, or is that not true?
It is true. We have four vests and four ballistic helmets on our ambulances.
And has that already been done?
We have it on our vehicles at this time.
We what?
We have it on the vehicles at this time, yep.
Yeah, okay, okay. So we're complying, if you will, for that, okay.
I have a question about the vehicles. I work for Bridgewater State University, and we moved to leasing our patrol vehicles from Enterprise off of state contracts. So I'm wondering if you, because it looks like you're replacing a couple a year, maybe that model may be a better fit for the time.
Before I was chief, I know the town did lease a few vehicles at that time. I was told it just wasn't cost-effective to do that. And I know it kind of stopped townwide.
Interest rate, too, on the lease. Yeah, now they're interest rate low, yeah.
It's certainly something to look at. I don't know if you drive $45,000 miles a year, which is where we kind of are.
Right, they're probably doing less miles, obviously, at the campus.
Right, right, I would think. I mean, you'd love to get more mileage out of it, but we don't.
Are you maintaining them internally?
Yeah, with the town, yeah.
Yeah, so they reduce the maintenance costs at the university for the fleet, for sure.
These, yeah, these really aren't old vehicles anyways. I mean, they're dumped out to two and a half.
Well, so they don't take a beating with Crown Victoria. Really could take a beating, but these things, no.
Right, I guess the real question is if you have that answer, is if you drive a vehicle $45,000 miles, so it becomes truthfully junk at the end of three years, is it worthwhile to lease it? I don't have that answer.
Might be something to look into, maybe.
That'll be the next thing. You'll have a police car birthday party type thing.
No, they actually take them and they sell them, and then they return the funds back to the university. So every year, you get a check based on the old property, yeah.
You guys could just seize more vehicles, and then we'll just put lights on all those.
Boy.
We tried.
Funny about it is it's a lot of joy.
We tried.
Good idea.
We had a nice $85,000 car. However, the drug car is usually evident in their mother's name.
That's right.
With the mother having an $85,000 note on it.
But if it's used in a commission of a crime, you could still seize it, so.
Oh, they were in commission of crime, but they didn't own it.
We'll work on it, Frank. We'll get you some money.
Yeah, we'd love to.
Any other questions for the chief? No? All good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is to briefly discuss the budget summary because I don't want to spend too much time on it right now other than just to say, hey, look, this is where we're starting from, and this is where we are, if everybody got everything they wanted. And that includes all major departments, including the schools as well. And we know that George and I had our regional finance committee meeting last week, so we kind of just talked briefly about that. So page one, right behind the little green sheet. So where we stand right now as of March 1st, 2019, is a deficit position of $662,000. This is somewhat typical, I guess I'd say, in terms of, you know, where we kind of start. Maybe it's a little bigger than where we typically start, but we always start in a negative position and try to kind of find our way back. Sometimes we're positive, but...
To be consistent with prior years, or at least the prior year or two, is that it's really missing $230,000 of OPEB liability.
Yes.
So if you really wanted to have a consistency start, you'd be 230 on top of the 662.
Yeah, I mean, but the thing is with that, we can't even really do that because otherwise we may have had more free cash that would have been available to offset certain budget items because we did make that choice, and the same thing with the highway.
But the missing line item is really the OPEB.
Yeah, there's, which is, exactly. It's a place that we could be a little more flexible with, and whether or not we're funding it or not. We have made that conscious effort to start funding OPEB on a schedule, which is about $230,000 a year. But what we did last year is because we had in excess of free cash that came from a lot of one-time things, we decided that we would take some of that and plow it ahead into our OPEB liability to try to get a little bit ahead on it, too. So just to kind of briefly, I just want to kind of hit the highlights on what we have here. Typically, you know, we have our tax levy, our two and a half percent increase, and our new growth is estimated at $250,000. New growth as an estimate is always one thing that we can play around with a little bit. We don't want to be too conservative, but we also don't, I think, you know, we've been trying to look at, if we end up with free cash at $1.1 million at the end of the year, you know, what derived our free cash to get us to that point? And was it a little excessive where maybe we could have used a little bit more within our operational budget? So I think that's always a question. 250, I think, is where we typically start. And where we end up, you can kind of see, is typically maybe 316, somewhere around there. So I think it's reasonable, and usually in conjunction with the town accountant, that's, you know, where we kind of come up with that number. So kind of moving down to the other revenues, the estimated receipts. Both Rita and our town accountant came up independently with what their estimate of estimated receipts would be this year, and this is where it sits. Again, estimated receipts.
That isn't what we increased it. We didn't increase it yet, right.
Oh, so we actually have an extra, so the estimated receipts should be increased by $133,000. So that will reduce our deficit down to about $530,000. So that's one change.
We're actually going to plug that by another couple hundred thousand at the end of the day.
In the estimated receipts, that will up it probably another hundred.
The only way you're going to balance the budget is to increase estimated receipts.
Or we take cuts, or we make cuts in certain places.
We didn't hire any.
I think the schools are a place where certainly if you-
We'll get to that, Frank.
Yeah, so just to kind of briefly go through that. Another area, too, though, is our 40s reimbursement. We fight that every year. It's decreased this year, $151,000. We've already reached out to our reps and senators, but we'll do it again to make sure they know that we want that back in the state budget. If we can get that funding back, that'll increase our revenues by another $151,000. That is the bonus that we get for the apartment complexes for excess children in the schools. Kind of moving down the road, free cash, it's lower, obviously, than the budget in '19. This is the free cash after, at the Fall Town meeting, we transferred everything out to capital project stabilization, OPEB, and roadway projects. So this is the remaining amount. We have nothing listed in the overlay reserve. We have nothing listed in the overlay reserve. There is a schedule of the overlay reserve totaling that six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. It's really kind of held back for property tax abatements that could be coming to us. It's up to the assessors to determine whether or not they want to release part of that overlay reserve, which then could be available for other uses, one-time uses, or things like that. It really was kind of a haircut on the total tax revenue that would have been coming in every single year, just to kind of be a conservative about what we might have for abatements on property taxes.
And if I may, Mitzi, there's about a hundred and eighty thousand left in old capital items. The station roof that we could use for some of the capital items.
So that's receipts. And what was it, one fifty?
About one eighty.
One eighty.
Almost as much as what we have in free cash.
Okay. So all these kind of one-time, one-eigh...
What have we historically used for the overlay?
We were using two-twenty-five a year. And we really weren't overly looking at that. So it was going into that fund and obviously there was less coming out. So last year was the first year that we did not put any in it. We used to put money in and then declare various surpluses, or turn it back to the town. We've just chosen not to put any money in there. Last year was the first, this would be the second, and maybe you've got one more year to go after that, that kind of thing. In a down economy... This is not a down economy. In a down economy, you'd have substantial companies coming to you saying, my business isn't worth... My building isn't worth twenty million dollars anymore. And, you know, try to win that battle. But that is not happening currently and probably would not happen next year either.
Yes, so the second page. Our educational increase this year in total is about nine hundred thousand dollars that's on here, which includes debt, so it's kind of a misnomer, too. But the biggest change here is, you know, our regional assessment. This includes our regional assessment, the seven-sixty, right? So the district has given us an assessment right now of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This also includes Old Colony, which gave us a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase. And we have no real increase listed here on Bristol Aggie. There's some change to the formula for this year, where we're going to be billed based off last year's enrollment going forward. So that's, again, if we do anything with that line item, it's like a one-time type, you know, here's a hump to get over something, as opposed to, you know, trying to use that as part of the operations.
The eight-nine, Mitzi's wrote about nine hundred thousand, it's eight-hundred-and-nine, which is a five-point-four, five percent increase, remembering that you get in five-sixty-six and two-fifty on your front page. So that's three-point-six percent increase, and the schools want five-point-four. But that isn't all, because you'll get into general government, which would be the next one.
Right, yeah.
Which is nine-point-four percent increase.
Yeah, and so just to kind of, you know, with regard to the schools, they have a meeting tomorrow night, is their budget meeting at the schools, where they're going to be debating the existing budget. They won't be voting on it yet, I don't think. They have to vote a budget by the end of March, if I'm not mistaken. So they're either voting tomorrow night, or they'll probably more likely vote in two weeks. And what they can do is they can vote a budget, but they can never... Once they vote that budget, they can't go above it, but they can cut it. And so likely, that's what I assume is going to happen, is that they'll vote the existing budget as it stands. They're going to use some wiggle room to try to tweak and move things around. But that'll be the point at which we look at what the increase is to us, which is seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is pretty much all of our new revenue that's coming in. And, you know, I think they're willing to work with us and we'll try to see if we can cut out maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars from that increase, if that's possible to work with them. I know they were talking about possibly utilizing some of their revolving accounts to fund some of their capital equipment, maybe for food service, or if there's any other offsets they might have within that budget. But we kind of let them get a little creative with it. If we come back to them and say, look, you know, we need the assessment to be down by, you know, somewhere between one-fifty and two-hundred off where we are right now. Knowing that if that is the request, then, you know, we can see if we can work with them, because Free Town would have a corresponding decrease as well. And Free Town's increase is a lot less than Lakeville's this year. So this is kind of when we'll start the conversations with Free Town to say, you know, we might need to kind of band together, and what can the schools take? And what can we take as a town? What can Free Town take so that we can all work together on this?
But before you went to the regional finance committee, because I watched that, you would discuss some quick numbers. Favorable bus of reimbursement, I thought, of like three-forty-five, or maybe that was just part of it. You talked about favorable buses. You talked about extra reimbursement.
Yep.
You talked about more money in chapter seventy. You're talking about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars extra in E and D that we gave last year. And for like, take four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars off the top. Now, I didn't do the math, but I was trying to write down those numbers you were quoting.
Yeah.
But I didn't see that...
They've all been filled in, and then some.
Well, that's what I was going to say to you after I watched the meeting. So it all got filled in, so you didn't...
There's no savings available based upon if you took last year's budget and you said, hey, look, you know, our transportation reimbursement was higher than what it ended up being at the end of the year, which is why they funded their E and D, so that we should be able to count on that as a reduction in what the increase will be for next year? And the same thing with last year, we gave them a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as a placeholder so that it would flow into E and D. So if you looked and said, we had four hundred thousand dollars that we knew that if you had an increase of one point two million in your budget overall, that we'd be able to reduce it by four hundred, because that's non-recurring. So your real increase is eight hundred thousand. That didn't happen, because the real increase was like two million. So it included all of those savings and then some. So their, you know, their budget is based upon what they believe their needs are, you know, within the district. And so they'll start debating that, and it's really, we kind of set the parameters. So we're trying to work with them to see, you know, what will be sustainable for the towns, you know, along with the schools.
Well, I did... Right. So if you take a look at that top of your page there in highlight, the two and a half percent increase that last year's budget for schools was thirteen-six-eighty-nine. If they had asked for three-forty-two, you're in good shape, because you take in two and a half percent extra every year. But in fact, it came in at nine hundred. I'm only pointing it out because if they don't hire a lot of people, then there's not really anything you're going to do about it. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mitzi, because...
Yeah, so, you know, and then just as we kind of go down the list, we'll go through all these other budgets. General government, you know, we do have it up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's due to a number of different account line items in different departments. So we'll go through all those individual departments with them. Same thing with all the public safety, public works, health and human services. One thing I just want to point out on the public works and the line item where it looks like it went down, that's because we had that four hundred thousand dollars that we transferred at the Fall Town Meeting into the highway department. So really kind of add that back in or take it away from the nineteen budget to kind of get apples to apples on this overall. Then the last kind of miscellaneous areas here, you can see that we had a reduction in our debt service. I think it's important to note, because we have been having a reduction in our debt service each year. What you see here with five-fifty-two, five-seventy-two, some of that is excluded, which means it's not actually necessarily hitting the bottom line. The excluded debt's on page one, on the revenue side. So if you offset the excluded debt with this debt, you can see what the real impact is of the operating budget. A hundred and six thousand...
Two-hundred and six.
Two-hundred and six. And I think it goes down to one... Two-hundred and six is debt exclusion.
Yep.
So we're at like three...
Of that, five-fifty-two.
So we're at like three-forty-something. That's actually hitting the operating budget, and next year we go down to like two-forty on the debt schedule. The reserve fund, if you remember, at the Fall Town Meeting, we transferred an additional fifty thousand dollars into a reserve fund. That was done kind of to cover any unexpected costs, of course, during the year. There has been no need, I think, or no request to tap... Well, you guys had one request to tap into the reserve fund for the ramp, right?
Yeah.
So that's been paid out of that, I assume.
Did that ever happen?
Yep.
Did it?
Oh, you mean, is the ramp built? I don't know.
No, I... I know, it's not.
It'd be like the town... It'd be like the town highway building that we appropriated four years ago. We still have...
Was that going to be a trailer?
I'm going to Old Deepo this weekend. I'm just going to build it myself.
So, you know, with the reserve fund, every year we've been putting in two hundred thousand dollars, really to kind of cover our snow and ice deficit, because what we do is we deficit spend snow and ice on purpose, just in case there happens to be a blizzard. I don't know why this still exists like this, but if that is the case, then we can get reimbursement from the state. So I know it's like the reserve fund, when we look at it as a line item, is really our snow and ice, so...
I don't mind if we...
I'm just afraid of that one time we do it and then we have a blizzard.
This is a really good year as of February twenty-eighth.
It was. Yeah, that changed.
As of February twenty-eighth.
Well, it was only negative eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. I mean, it's minimal this year.
Yeah, yeah.
We changed that.
So our pension increase is just obligated. Same with our group benefits, that's gone up five percent, was that?
No, two things. In the pension increase, I haven't deducted the highway department employee. That will probably get reduced, five or six thousand.
Okay.
Health insurance, I'm using a ten percent increase.
Okay.
Gateway's going to vote next month, and I believe it'll go down to eight, and that's a forty-five thousand dollar savings.
And that includes one additional employee, two, three?
I believe...
Two families, two singles?
I think so.
Okay.
One single, I think, two family.
Okay. So there's an estimated increase in there for new hires, for health insurance benefits, too. Our retirees' health insurance appears to be going down as well. That line item will change a little bit with Gateway, if that reduces as well? It's not like a big...
No, they're on a January 1st basis, and medics, too. There are a couple of active... Yeah, it could go down a little bit with active retirees.
So, yeah, so we might have another forty-five thousand dollars savings here.
Active retirees. They're not sixty-five yet.
And so then we're not putting anything, it's not right now, into OPEB for this year, because we kind of covered that with the transfer at the Fall Town Meeting. So that's kind of where we stand right now. There's opportunities to have some additional things happen. And then, of course, in terms of funding sources, at some point, we'll talk about what that looks like, what generates free cash and...
The part that was... I'm going to do this in two minutes, if you can believe that. The tax levies, you know, the two and a half and the new growth, just as a memory, is three-point-six percent. The requested... So if we requested just three-point-six, we're in good shape. So I'm just going to give you the quick percentages. The schools are five-point-four, five percent. General government's nine-point-four percent. Public safety is six-point-three percent. Public works is okay. Health and, we'll call it the border health, that type of thing, is nine-point-five percent. The library's two-point-six. And on the last page, which is generally the capital, which we've not addressed, we've, for the last four years, not counting this year, we've had eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars worth of capital expenditures. And this year is even bigger, requested, we'll call it a million-one to a million-three. So that we have been able to get those funds from the free cash that we're generating. But I think you'll find that the way that you're going to balance this year's budget is obviously to increase those estimated receipts substantially. So you may not have those substantial free cash numbers. When it comes to fixed assets, you have plenty of money to fund fixed assets this year. And then you're kind of out. Once you've done the water tower and the Highland Street property. So balancing the budget this year, it's easy. It's only taxpayers' money, and it's only money in accounts that we already have.
Well, I think, you know, one of the big things that we'll have to keep in mind and kind of keep on top of, too, is where are our marijuana companies with regard to grow in revenue production? Not that I want to stretch anything necessarily in anticipation of revenue that we don't have, because that's a bad idea. But I think that it's just important to kind of note and make sure that we know, you know, when we do go through here... And we never give... When we go through the capital plan, typically, you know, we cut, we move, and we push things off. Because we look at how we're going to fund this, how much we want to take out of stabilization to fund capital items, look at anything that maybe we do want to do upon anticipation note for, and kind of push it out. But those are things that, you know, we always start with everything and we ask for everything. And it's the same thing with the budget and the operational budget.
Right. We certainly haven't pushed much out, because we've been buying eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand a year. But you do have the money available. The pot money, philosophically, we had those discussions that we were talking about. If you had a million dollars a year, we had talked about roads. We had somewhat talked about, you know, it could be one-time capital equipment. It could be first respond to money. Because if the town, if the state ever does want mitigation accountability, which they haven't yet, you'd be able to have that funds available for, call it the pi trust, for the want of a better word. You'd have that money that could be spent out of it, and the state couldn't do much. And that comes out of your operational money, not operational money, but it comes out of your capital money.
Yeah, I mean, I think the other thing, too, is you could, you know...
Right. I think you'll find the way you're going to balance the budget this year...
I wouldn't even consider it until you have it.
Oh, I wouldn't...
I wouldn't even talk about it.
I wouldn't put a nickel there, because we had thought that this year, this year between now and the end of June thirty, we would have had some money. There isn't any money even on the table until August to the fall, at the earliest. And that's two places. That's it.
So much for bless.
So the money, if it comes, will come late next year.
Yeah, I think it'll be good, and I think we'll just be watching it, because that will be helpful if and when it does come to, you know, take care of some future needs of the town. All right.
Yeah, Frank, you're not here tomorrow night, Judge?
No, and I'm actually, I'm texting Dan to see if he's going to be here, because I haven't heard from him.
Because the big nut tomorrow night is roads.
Yeah.
And bond. And if we talk, just forgetting what Franklin's asking for, right at the moment, we certainly have Route seventy-nine. Although they want a letter from us committing to that project, I find it hard to do that prior to the walkthrough on that April twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I want to have that conversation with Franklin. And I want to do that when he's here. If we have a conversation, and if you guys can't make it, then we can have a further conversation. Because originally, what we wanted to do is we wanted to, in conjunction with the finance committee, is talk about road bonds, because we have a lot of different roads in town where Franklin's worked with an engineer and has gotten up to six million dollars, eight million dollars, different kind of quotes for what he could do with this in town and what roads he could pave, which would be a necessary, or I shouldn't say necessary, but in order for him to get a little bit caught up so that we could do maintenance on the main roads, as opposed to them with a limited maintenance that they have or the limited amount of money that he, that we receive from the state each year for chapter ninety money for road repairs. Because it's, there's a huge problem where we need to kind of get on top of it. And if we don't, then we'll never be able to kind of catch up with the money that we're granted from the state every year.
Right, right. And I was hoping that eventually the marijuana money, a million dollars of that a year, could go towards roads. No, you can't put that on the budget, because we don't have any marijuana money in front of us yet.
Right, so...
So Franklin's is understated by three million... If we did Franklin's, just for Judge, and we can have this... Are you both coming tomorrow night? That it's Franklin's plus three million dollars.
Yeah, we'll talk about Route seventy-nine, because I don't know if we even know what the number is.
No, you don't.
But I want to get him, yeah.
You don't.
So let's have that conversation with him. But we definitely have some issues. All right, so any new business?
I wanted to, we still have, after tomorrow night, we still have a lot of other departments scheduled. We've got another date to meet with the library trustees, the board of directors, and all the other departments.
They're not as contentious.
No. I'm waiting to hear back, because we may not have a quorum tomorrow, so I want you guys to know.
Cassandra's husband's not back.
Right, but we certainly would like whoever can attempt, attempt.
Yeah, of course.
Because we're not, you're not voting.
And Dan already said tonight and tomorrow.
Well, I just asked him. He said he was a Navy for tomorrow, so I'm just checking with him right now. We'll see if he responds.
Possible, do the eighteenth, March eighteenth, does that work? It's Monday.
That's fine with me.
I can't do it, unfortunately. But you guys can do it without me.
Does that work for you guys?
I looked at my busy schedule.
Six-thirty is one status.
It's all right till golf season.
Six-thirty, yeah.
Till I go back to work.
All right.
I'll put it in. I'll, I'll put it in, and if I can make it, I'll, I'll be here. We'll send it out to everybody as well.
All right. Okay, old business, new business?
I have, oh, I have some fun old, but... Old business was to discuss the meeting with town council and the Board of Lothman regarding the marijuana. Katie Lothman had given me three dates.
Do you have those dates written down?
Well, 13th, the 18th, or the 20th?
What time, did she give a time?
I, I said it would be a night meeting, that she was fine. I haven't heard back from Amy, because John had wanted both attorneys.
Because one's been doing the zoning board, and one's been doing the planning board. And we really should have, we really should have one attorney, you know, unless someone's absent.
Katie did the bylaw, too.
Okay, so let's try for the 20th. I hope I could make it. I will have to let you know.
But if you're not going to make, I mean, you're, you're the...
I don't know yet.
So you're saying, no, I mean, you're the key part of it, so...
Yeah, I'll know by tomorrow.
Oh, that's fine, right, right. I thought you were saying, you'll let me know if you're not coming, then.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah.
That's fine.
When would you know about it?
I'm just going to email, I should know by tomorrow.
Oh, okay, so I'll hold off and wait to...
Yeah.
Should we close out?
Motion to adjourn.
We can, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
All right, motion to, close up the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're good, we're done. Oh, I'm so sorry. I was going to put the table off, I'm bad.
We haven't adjourned yet to anything else.
Okay, give us a, okay.
Yes, I have one, one quick thing.
Oh, did we blow you off?
I don't need you.
Good night, everybody, thank you. See you, see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
It's good to see you. Thanks, you too.
See you.
Good night.
Good night.
So, Mike, I'm really sorry. So we haven't just figured out where you were there.
All right, what's up?
I met with a cab Belkin today about putting the, this building on the MLS. One of the things that he has to include in that listing is a price. So...
What did we do with the last one?
We did an appraisal.
And that's how we, yeah, and that's how we came up with it, yeah.
Now, if you use mark, the assessed value?
It's like 7...
Do the assessed value.
The assessed value is what?
Like 715.
Yeah, because what we had said was that we couldn't accept less than the assessed value, though. And what does that mean? That was the issue, right?
That wouldn't work.
Well, that was the idea, because...
Because we were afraid of...
Yeah, because typically assessed values are a little lower than market rate or market value.
So what, what, what did we assess, the assesses' building?
The appraisal came in at 320. We sold it for 330.
330, wasn't it 230?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
230, 240, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, but we got 10,000 more. And the appraisal wasn't far, I don't think, from the assessed value.
So, so we're looking for a minimum value.
Because right now, it says here, if I'm reading this correctly, the current assessment is 712, 800.
400, 499, 390.
Well, yeah, you can, you can list it as at that, and we'll, you take its, you take...
Say the best offer. Say the best reasonable offer.
Yeah.
With, with all the caveats, let's say you have the right to refuse it, and so on and so...
Right, the same thing he has is...
You just have to have a price on...
Yeah.
So, so use that... Assess value, yeah, okay. Because we have no idea, I mean, it's one thing if it's a house that, like, someone otherwise could make into a house.
I had called, I told, I told you, I had called the realtor.
Are bad, no, no.
Right, I told you, I mean, it really should be a, a package deal.